Welcome to our May 24th meeting. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Eric?
Yes, resignation, retirements, and leaves with absence. We have one retirement at the middle school, grade seven, science, fiddle sprout. Appointments, payroll assistant, Christine Cinco Grana, and technology specialist, Richard Booth.
And we have some correspondence that's in the packet?
Yes, several letters of thanks from the library for the students out of Mrs. Marshall's family consumer science class, helped provide food, made the food for the fundraiser, and also some served as waiters and assistants.
Yes, and it was a wonderful night, it was so much fun, and everybody did such a good job. And the lady that did the costumes, is your neighbor, right, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, she did it, everybody, it was very nice. Okay, old business, the budget, Mr. Eric?
Yes, with the passage and approval of the petitioner's budget, our budget submission was approved by voters as part of that vote that took place on Saturday.
And so now we can advertise for those positions?
Yes.
That we had in there, the technology person?
Well, we have, yes, we can do that, and the other one will be hired internal to the media math.
Media math, okay. And that would be the, there were three budgets. The budget number one was the one that the town council and the budget committee and the school committee worked on all winter and submitted to the public. And then number two was Mr. Katz's budget, which cut money and took out of the general fund again. And number three was Mr. Joseph Souza's budget, which also cut money. And the one that won was number two. The number two petitioner budget was Justin Katz's budget. So now, within 30 days, I think the rule is, somebody will have to meet and decide where they're going to do those cuts on the town side. That's a state law, they have to present something, present a budget within 30 days. So I don't know what process that will be, but we'll keep our eye on that. Thank you. Spiteful and successful elementary presentation of full day kindergarten with the kindergarten teachers, which we're all so excited about. We waited a long time for this, I'm glad I lived to see ya.
So I'm Amanda Scanlon, I'm a kindergarten teacher over at Ranger.
I'm Brittany Raposa, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Pecassett.
Jennifer Getz, kindergarten teacher at Dukes.
Christine Griffith, Ranger.
Patty Lynch, special educator, Ranger.
Pam Kane, kindergarten teacher at Wood Martin.
So what we ended up giving the children with full day K was the gift of time. I remember last year, we could either do maybe kid writing and a math lesson, and then we had to have snack and leave. And if you had a fire drill, something had to go, that wasn't happening. We had meetings in August, and we were talking about our schedules for this year, and I distinctly remember saying, what am I going to do with the kids all day? How, you know, what are we going to teach them? And I, no, now, I'm thinking, I just need a little more time with them. We still don't have enough time.
So when I was rushed when teaching math and literacy, we had more time to explain and provide reinforcement and exploration of materials. We would teach a subject, and then we're off to the next, off to the next lesson. I didn't really have time to actually master it and learn it, and now I feel like they have more time. And I, I mean, I gave them a math worksheet yesterday, and they had it done in like five minutes, and they were working on, you know, the the teen numbers. And I thought, oh my gosh, they all finished, and they all got it right. Ah, you know, just the time, it was just so important. We also implemented Lexia, which is a reading supplement, and I noticed that that's helped the kids a lot, too. And they're learning their sight words, and then they love getting the award at the end. They're like, I'm at the end of level five, it's time for an award, Mrs. Scanlon. I said, okay, I'll print that out. So they're really excited about that. Also, we have art, music, library, and health. I feel like now we're teaching to the whole child. I just felt it was just PE last year, and sometimes kids aren't, don't do as well academically, but they're artistic, and they look forward to art, and I just, I thank you for bringing us full day this year.
The next couple of slides are just some pictures of the kids in their centers that we're able to do now with the full day program.
I made the end.
A little nervous. Why are you taking a picture of me? That's reading a room.
What colors are we going to use to color in Hannah? Cool colors. Say it back to me, what colors?
Cool colors.
So this year, we were also allowed to, allow, able to allow more time for science. So not only did we get to teach the curriculum with fidelity, but we also got to supplement it with some of the students' own questions, and allow them to explore their own questions for a more organic learning experience. In speaking with the music and art gym and library teachers who are excited to have full day K this year, they're looking forward to next year when those kids go into first grade, not having to spend that month at the beginning of the year, going over the routines for their class and how things are, and what they're going to be able to cover in addition next year because of that extra time. We've also been able to partner with other grades throughout the school year on different activities. I've done some science projects with third grade, and we've been able to do some buddy reading, and we're finding that it's beneficial for not only the kindergarten kids, but also the kids of the other classes as they're working with the other children. So just images of them working together.
We received a lot of positive parent feedback. Full day allows more time for their child just to be a kid and build their confidence, and they were, you know, more than willing to assist me with parent letters, so they're just very happy. One of my parents said, I feel I have a more confident child entering first grade. Sum it up.
Hello, my name is Mike Decotes, and I have a daughter, her name is Christina. She's just finishing up her first year of full day K at Pecassett, and I wanted to send this message to everyone involved in making that happen, and I want to let you know what a positive experience it's been for us. My child is reading efficient, adding, subtracting, problem solving. I mean, without all day K, I just don't really know. I'm confident that she would have done well, even a half day, but she's just getting everything she needs out of it. It's teaching her such valuable life lessons. She loves going to lunch, and she loves, she loves June, she loves art. She really, really, really was such a great candidate for all of day K. My wife and I couldn't be any happier that this happened this year for the first time, just in time for our daughter to take advantage of that. And her teacher, Mr. Raposa's fantastic. And the class dojo has kept us right in the loop, we know what's going on when she gets off the bus. So we just wanted to say thank you, and give an update of how it's touched us in such a positive way, you know, preparing my daughter to really excel when she goes into first grade next year. So thanks again, truly appreciate it.
I feel strongly that having a full day of kindergarten gave many more opportunities for Peter to become a better student. The services he received as part of his IEP would not have been as easily accessed during half day. Clearly, he would have been missing out on a greater amount of instructional time, and he would have been able to have the time to grow socially only if he was in a full day. My husband and I are much more hopeful about Peter's being able to succeed in first grade, and I really believe in my heart that it's because he was given the chance and opportunity to be in a full day kindergarten. Thank you.
This is some of the writing that the children are doing now. They are able to extend their thoughts, we're making connections.
Not only that, but I think we're doing the program, Being a Writer, and their writing has improved dramatically. I see such a difference from doing a kid writing that I did so many years ago to the Being a Writer program. Sometimes it was so difficult to pull an idea out of their head. There's never a loss for ideas in the program, and we're doing opinion writing, so many different genres, and they just love it. You can just tell from the samples of, you know, the writing that we have, they love to write.
I know our first grade teachers are really looking forward to next year having kids coming in from a full day of kindergarten program. And it's really the little things that they're excited about, like not having to teach them what's the difference between a snack and a lunch, and how to order lunch, and how that workshop model works within the classroom, because they already have all that experience coming into their first grade classrooms. So that's going to be exciting to see where they can go academically with them next year.
I just wanted to say also that I think they've increased their stamina. You know, I know what it's like when they, when they enter the kindergarten room, you know, after a couple hours, they were exhausted. As the year went on, they are so ready to, you know, to be in a full day program, and when they enter first grade, they're going to be very prepared, you know, just their stamina alone.
New friends are playing, baskets are leaving, being rough, burning, dancing and singing, working on writing and creation stations. These are a few of my favorite things. Music and art class, him and library, working on the smartphone and listening to stories, studying, much time in having recess. These are a few of my favorite things. When I fall down, when I'm leaning, when I'm feeling sad, I simply remember my favorite things, and then I don't feel so bad.
So not only thank you from us, but thank you from the kids for giving them that opportunity. For any, Jim?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that was really exciting.
Thank you so much for helping us.
It's so nice to hear that, you know, the decisions we made made such a difference. Discussion possible vote, now approval of art literacy camp at Pecassett School. And we'll talk about it first, because last week, everybody was a little confused because we vote so quickly. But Mr. Eric was taking the minutes, so I can let him be.
Thank you.
So we can discuss the art literacy camp at Pecassett School. Mr. Eric, whose is that?
That is, our those who are here, it's a program we've been running, but I just wanted to make the committee aware of what the program does over the summer.
Sure, so basically, since 2008, we've been offering a one-week summer program in Tiverton for children in K through four. And they come for a week, and it involves reading, writing, technology. We have integrated arts and theater arts. So it's myself, Sherry Als, who's also a teacher in Tiverton, as well as Gloria Christ and another teacher, former teacher, from Tiverton, Danielle Singh. So we usually have an average of about 20 students that come for the program. We usually offer scholarships for children who are unable to afford the fee, and we usually have a great time, so.
And what is the fee?
It's $200 this year.
$200?
$200 for the week.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there a discount if you have more than one?
We do, yeah, we offer discount for more than one.
Any questions on that? Do we need to vote, Mr. Eric, because you did just want to let us know?
That's really just.
Yeah, because if we've already been running.
Let you know since you've already voted on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great program.
Thank you for doing that. Discussion possible vote on the teacher nod, renewal of displacements.
Is there two additional displacements made by the committee at our last meeting? Coming back tonight, this would be the last of the displacements, and it's a result of the reductions in staff that the committee approved back in January.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the two non-renewal displacements in our packet. There are no numbers attached to these?
You can just accept as presented.
Do I have a second? Second or a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Before we vote, Mr. Eric, can you just gloss for us again the meaning between a displacement?
Sure.
A displacement is, I mean, for a teacher, due to either staffing or lack of funding, a lack of students, excuse me, not staffing, or a lack of funding, position that they're teaching in either gets reduced, either from a full-time in status, whether it's full-time, four fifths, or whatever, they get reduced back, or they get sent to a different school because that's, they're getting bumped out by someone else. So that's displacement. Non-renewal is, you're not coming back because we don't have the money to pay for that bigger position that we were in.
So these are two displacements?
These are displacements of be working in other parts of the district.
Some of them in the district. And does it make a difference, or, so in the two particular cases, they're being moved because?
Both are being moved within the build, the same building.
And is it because their position?
Right, because people are coming down and pushing them into their positions.
And that's based on the teacher's contract?
Yes.
That if someone's position is?
Right, it's part of seniority.
Change in?
Any more questions? All those in favor? Discussion possible vote, request for a two-seed bid?
Yes, if the committee recalls, when we originally brought the facilities recommendations committee, a facility study recommendation, we asked for permission back in September to go to RIDE to see if they would fund two sets of programs for us. One, one project was, is for $110,000. You have the backup there. These are for smaller items that are in our facility study. And then there was a second set, or a second proposal, which did receive approval from RIDE for $460,000, and we would be getting $160,000 back for reimbursement on that. After, because we did not know what the status of our necessity of construction application would be, we secured funding for this prod, for this work. One of the other items on the agenda is that RIDE did approve our stage two application, our necessity for construction application. So all these items will now be, be able to get reimbursed by the state of Rhode Island because they were in our facilities plan that had submitted for our necessity for construction application. So we'll be getting not only reimbursed for the 460, but for the 110 as well.
Okay, and the total of the 110, 110,000 plus 460,000, which is 570,000, that is coming out of our reserves.
Yes.
And the town, the municipal side, will get the reimbursement from RIDE. So we fund the full amount, but the town will see reimbursement from RIDE.
And because, right, as part of our necessity for construction was our bond application for 15.4 million. That would work a little differently if it's approved by voters. The voters, the town puts up the 15.4 million, and then the state, every year, sends a reimbursement back to the town for that, for that amount. The financing for this is really from ours. Right, this financing comes from us.
Just to clarify that, we've had these numbers since last fall, so we put aside money, if you recall.
Right.
Via capital vote, so this doesn't affect our unreserved fund balance at all. We had already set aside money as part of our 1.1 million for capital purposes.
Right, so we've already, again, that's a good point, we've already put the money aside, but because RIDE now approved our application.
It will get that reimbursement.
Right, so we can get the reimbursement, but normally, if the committee approves the request, we would normally just go out to bid, you know, we put the specs together and go out to bid. But because now RIDE's involved in the process, RIDE has to approve.
The bid document.
A bid document, so we've been working with RGB, we've already met with them, they've already met with RIDE, so we're in the process of getting their approval, so we can then go out to bid to do this work.
Otherwise, we don't get reimbursement.
What's the reimbursement, 30?
35%.
35%.
And anything that we can tie back to health and safety, not health and safety, environmental.
Environmental green stuff.
Green materials, we can get up to 39%. So depending on the particular item, a lot of these, I don't believe are qualified for that, but the boilers and the HVAC systems, we believe, work.
So these were all capital items we had talked about, but it's just.
That we were going to do anyway.
The billiness that we have now is because it's part of that.
Right, however, I have necessity for.
That big construction thing that we did will get reimbursed.
And for all capital repairs, outside of the bond, anything else that's in that facility study that we can either fund ourselves, or the town is willing to fund for us, will be eligible for reimbursement for five years, because it was all part of that application.
Very comprehensive.
And, and just so people understand, these are things that we fund outside of the town budget process. That we do not go to the town to ask them for capital improvements for the schools. We have traditionally, for years now, done it out of our reserves.
And the biggest one was the septic, which was 750,000, 700, something, that we paid for ourselves.
I mean, it's taxpayer money.
It wasn't a separate appropriation.
It's not in a separate appropriation.
And it's not coming out of our operations.
I didn't pay for myself.
Yeah, I'm not paying for it, no, taxpayers definitely.
Town's money.
That's right, it's all the town's money.
Right. But we're managing it.
And we didn't have to go back to the town, ask for, ask for more.
Well, that's the, that's the important point, because when the three schools were told by D E M we had to, they were going to close down if we didn't do that, if we didn't have that money, the town would have had to come up with it, which would have been very difficult, since there's hardly any money left in the general fund, but that's another day. So does anyone have a motion for that?
I make a motion to approve the request to go out to bid for the two proposals for repairs and renovations.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Discussion necessity of school construction approval?
It's just a notification that our, our school construction project, we call it the stage two application, it's going to be approved by RIDE.
That's great.
By RIDE, but not by the Council on Secondary Education?
No.
Is that correct?
The school building authority, which is part of RIDE.
But still, it has to be approved by the Council on Secondary Education, correct?
No, the General Assembly.
No, this was approved.
The General Assembly.
No, RIDE, RIDE has approved this, because this is part of that $20 million, not 20 million, the pool of money that is already dedicated.
Right.
So that, it's done, it doesn't have to be approved by anybody else.
The council, yeah, the council approves it, now it's up to the state.
Right, the state has to pass the binding, the enabling legislation.
For the bond.
I'm talking about the RIDE application, I thought there was another level of approval, but it's sort of a rubber. No, because if you see here, this is a letter from Commissioner Wagner, to the Council on Elementary and Secondary Ed, for recommendation, and they approved his recommendation to the council. So you are correct, but it's already been, that's a one slatter show.
The school building authority.
Right, they, they reviewed it and said.
The Council on Secondary Education, and they just hopefully rubber stamped it.
Which they did, okay.
So that's good, and then the next process is the General Assembly, and then we have the bill here finally, it got up there, and Jay just told me it's going to House Finance, so it's in the queue, so we're all set with that.
And after starting the first week in June, I'm going to reconvene at some point the facilities committee, so we can start planning our strategies to seek voter approval for the bond, and then bring the strategies before the committee for your review of approval.
And there's no vote on that, we're all set?
This is the easy part, yeah, this is the.
Convincing the state.
This is hard to do, but the next part will be even more challenging.
Two-year process?
Yeah, it was a two-year process.
Okay, any questions on that from anyone? Is Mr. Perry here? Thank you from the council for putting that through with us. It was unanimous by the council, thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Discussion possible vote, member equity reimbursement for OPEP, Mr. Fiore?
Yes, thank you, it was a follow-up to our last meeting's vote to, to create a OPEP fund through the trust program. There's some paperwork that needed to be completed, namely a specific resolution that I included in the package, so we just need to document what the vote is, and the other agreements that are in the package include the agreement with our management company, which is Vandar, PARZ, who administers the program, and U S National Bank, who uses an intermediary to fund our investments. So I included all those documents in the package, and I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding them. It doesn't change anything from our fire time.
Wait, but do we need to take another vote because there are specific papers? Okay.
Want a vote on the two-page resolution?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions on that? No? Depp? You all set?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Fiore, for all that hard work with that. Discussion possible votes to the textbook loan program, Mr. Fiore?
Yes, this is a new item. A few years ago, the East Bay Collaborative started a program where they took over the textbook loan program for districts. And the textbook loan program, because of the treasure, is the books, certain books for students that are educated outside the district of living in Tiverton, who are obligated to purchase, or to borrow, if we have them already. So what the East Bay has done for a few other districts is they manage the program, and what it allows the communities to do is pool their resources. They basically create a library of these books that are frequently loaned. So we're going to, if we adopt this, give them all of the books that we've previously purchased, it goes into the library, and then as the book, the need for books come up through students requesting them, they, if we don't have books specifically purchased, they'll go to the library and see if another district that's participating has the book, and it will be the need for us to repurchase the. will be the need for us to repurchase the book.
Ah, okay.
In the event that there is no book throughout the region, then they purchase a book, and the cost is divided among the participating communities.
How nice.
So there is a fee, which I indicated in my memo. I put the documentation for the program. But what we, the big plus for me now is, in the summer, we're having some kind of, sort of, a rush of our registrations, and we're having difficulty in meeting the required and sole parents that come in to register, especially in the morning. Right now, our staffing allows us to just staff in the afternoon. So the individual that does this is doing our textbook loan program. That would free that person up in the summer when this program peaks, and allow them to work in the admin office for the full day, thereby accommodating the registration process.
So parents, should we join this, do all their pickup and drop-off and warrant?
At a central location, they are responsible for returning the books.
Send out a letter to...
Yeah, I put some of the correspondence that would go out to the parents that participate, the families that participate in this, and they would, it's online through the East Bay Collaborative website, so they would just be able to download the forms and submit them through the website. So it's a little more efficient if we came to it.
Now, Doug, it says we will invoice the district for the cost of the advertisement, the cost of the books.
Yeah, which we're paying now, except we've burned all of the purchases.
Oh, I guess I'm not reading that it's, where is it? Oh, up here. That the cost, and the cost will be proportionally involved in the districts. Okay.
That's the new purchases that are in the library.
Right. So what do we pay on average for, I mean, it's a $3,000, I mean, it sounds great, but it's a $3,000 administrative charge. What do we pay on average annually to buy books anyway?
That is a good question. That would probably go down, because if any book is, if we're allowed to borrow that from the library and it's being shared, we wouldn't need to purchase it. So I would say the book cost was probably going to offset the fees that we would probably be paying on average. We'd pay about $17,000 a year to purchase those textbooks.
So it's substantial, then, because, I mean, we're only paying $300.
Right, because what would happen is the parent says, we need books A, B, and C.
Sure.
And our practice has been, if we don't have it, we buy it. So now, as being part of the collaborative, they'll go see if books A, B, and C are there. And if they are, we don't pay anything. They just loan them out.
Right.
You know, the parents. And if they don't have them, we pay for them, you know, we pay for them.
A portion of it, not the entire book.
Right, we pay them discounted.
So it's really just the administrative charge plus a portion of any new books?
Right.
Which is a lot lower than the $79,000.
I just double-checked our budget, and it's 17 for next year as well. It's been pretty consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Does statute that sort of makes us do this in any way account for, you know, working on the book of Kells or something like that, you know, some enormously expensive textbook?
It has to be on the RIDE-approved textbook list, so if, and there's actually an online tool at the very last page I put in the package. So you put in the book number, and if it doesn't appear on the RIDE-approved list, it cannot authorize for it. So there is a check.
And then what about, is there any anticipation of modifying the statute to account for non-textbook type educational resources?
Yields at any end?
Each of the districts does an annual textbook upload to the state, and that's where they get their approved textbook list from. So they look across the districts and what the public schools are using. And I just recently inquired, since I was new to the role of uploading that report. It does not include online text. The statute is very clear that it is physical textbooks, the traditional sorts. So it does not include the other pieces, and they don't upload that information regarding ebooks or even supplemental texts. It's the main core text that we use for each course that would be added to the state list.
Thank you.
We'll be keeping an eye on that, just in case they come in and say they want like 100 iPads or something.
Yeah, I'm at work, and I plan expansion of the program.
We already talked to representatives, and it's not a good thing, because we don't have them yet, so.
So I'm asking for approval for two major reasons. One is, I think, it would potentially save us some funds by being able to pool the resources and maybe not buy a particular book from one where someone else already does, and it's in a inventory, and for the administrative purpose of freeing up that, the clutter that's now performing this to do some of the registration work for a whole day.
I'll make a motion to approve the student textbook loan program with Rebecca to enter into that.
Second.
All those in favor? Discussion possible vote, update on curriculum and instruction grant award for elementary engineering. I'm so excited.
Yes, this grant from Van Buren was awarded to us in the amount of $32,681, to support engineering within, at the elementary level. This grant, I don't think Jim was on the committee at the time, but Diane Santa brought it to us, and we had someone from Salway come and speak to us. And the committee said, yes, apply. So we did. Well, it took a while, but I'm pleased to announce that we were awarded those funds. And maybe you want to go a little further into what we can expect?
Sure. So the program, the grant is mainly focused on professional development through the use of the Boston Museum of Science program, engineering is elementary, and targets professional development for third and fourth grade teachers, all third and fourth grade teachers in Tiverton. And coincidentally, not knowing that the grant would be approved, we have a vertical science team K through eight, which had looked at, is continuing to look at multiple sources of enriching our science, and really felt like this would be a nice match. So over a year and a half ago, this grant was initially conceived, and the materials included still continue to be very appropriate. It really focuses on the next generation science standards, engineering practices, and that's all open inquiry, really design-driven work. The nice thing about the series is that it also does some nice interdisciplinary work. So each unit is tied to a storybook, and the book then guides the students to a problem, and they have a lot of free rein and some constraints in how to solve it. So we'll be receiving professional development materials, and then ongoing support and partnership on the pedagogy of engineering with Dr. Mejiganti from Salway.
So we went to Newport County Mentor, which we always talk about, get out of Tiverton, go see what's happening. We went onto the island over the bridge, and we met with the people from Salway and the people from Van Buren. We meet every month, and we talk about all the great things we're doing. Linda goes, Diane and I went, and that's how this happened. We met them and told them we were interested in doing these things. We needed support. And I'm so happy that they did come through. And I saw, I saw her the other day, and she said, I'm hoping, I'm hoping. So I was so excited to hear the news. That'll be great. And then we have the middle school, and they were very pleased with the middle school one we just did. And they said they follow it, because everyone's very competitive for this money. So if you don't do what you said you're going to do, of course, you're not going to get it again. And they were very pleased with the middle school one that we just finished, the middle town. So I agree. Thank you very much.
That Van Buren grant from Little Town is one more year.
Do we have to vote on accepting this this year?
Yes.
Oh, I make a motion to approve the grant.
Excellent. Second. Any questions from anyone? No? All those in favor? That's great. Thank you very much. Tiverton Library Foundation?
It's just letters that...
Oh, the letters that we got to support of the Culinary Arts.
Look, let me just read the people they acknowledged, since not everyone gets them. They acknowledged the Culinary Arts Department and Kathy Marshall. They acknowledged Adam Tracy from our Art Department. They acknowledged our future business leaders of America Club and their advisor Judy Moore. And they also acknowledged the Drama Club and their director, Gloria Christ.
Thank you, Deb. That was wonderful. Thank you to everybody that took part in that. And it's important that the schools get out to the community so they can see all the great things we're doing. Any questions on that? Rhode Island Association of School Committee's update. So the legislature passed a law that all school committee members have to have six hours a year of professional development, which I think is a great idea, and we should probably do it for the town council. Mr. Perry, do you think so? So anyway...
I can't imagine.
So this time, it was on the Massachusetts model, which we all hear about all the time. And I was very, I was very interested. Well, you were there. You taught there, you taught there, Jim, and I did. And we always hear about it. And so Mr. Driscoll was there, and interestingly enough, we both came back in 1993 during every forum there. So we always say, it's never all about money. We know that. But it is too about money, because Rhode Island is 43rd from the state in support of education, K through 12, and 47th for higher ed. So he said they put in 350 million a year to the budget for this. They put 40,000, 40, it was just amazing, the numbers he was rattling off for tutors, and I know I was there. And they had, in Durfee High School, they had a huge library, and what they did is they cut it in half, and they said, they asked for volunteer teachers of math and literacy, if they were going to come in there and work in there to help the kids pre-test, post-test, and all that. And that's what they did. They hired us during the summer to work on curriculum. It was just, they were all in. The state was all in. They didn't count anything for 10 years. The first time we got those back, we said, oh, wait a minute, we better look at this again. And that's how it went. So it was a great, a great day. And an aside point of personal privilege, this is so funny. So when you get 100 hours of this professional development, you get a little silver star. So I had gotten that. When you get 200 hours, you get a gold star.
Oh.
And I was so excited, because I got like 215 hours, and I was saying, oh, this is so wonderful. They didn't give out the star. They gave out a little pin you can't even see. I was like, what happened to my words? So anyway, I was just very excited to represent Tiverton.
You talked in Delfino.
I want my gold!
So anyway, it was a great day, and we all, we all take part in that. And she, best practices, and we all get together and moan and groan about everything at the time. So thank you. Does anyone else have any announcements? No?
Kudos for 215 hours.
Yeah.
You should want a star.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I guess that's it. Any executive session, Mr. Rierick?
No.
Oh, this is a nice early night.
Motion to adjourn? Second.